Hi, my name is Brad Brown. I'm the city manager here in Bethany. I know a lot of faces around here. Some of you may not know me. I've been on the job for a little over three weeks now and I'm... One of my favorite things to do in anywhere I've been, especially here, and being here for three weeks, is the most valuable resource that we have in Bethany is our employees. And one of the most exciting things I can do is give recognition to those employees. And so we have a list tonight that have been here anywhere from five to 35 years of service with the city. And so I would like to take just a moment. I know several of them couldn't be here, but there are several that are here. And as I call names and announce, if those that are here would come forward and allow me to greet you and give you your award certificate. The first one on our list with five years of service with Public Works is Guillermo de Lara Martinez. I don't believe he's here tonight. The second person is Josh Morgan, five years with the fire department. Josh, thank you for your service. Next on the list with 15 years of service with Public Works is Jaime Carrera Juarez. I don't believe they're here. Justin Falter, 15 years with the police department. Next on the list is Scott Garnon, 15 years with community development. I don't know if he was here. Make sure I get the right one here. One more. Thank you for your service. Next with 20 years of service with the fire department is Curtis Taylor. Thank you for your service, 20 years. Really appreciate it. Next is, with 25 years of service, is William Billy Greenwood. Billy? Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And with 25 years with the fire department is Lonnie Compton. Lonnie? Congratulations on 25 years.
Thanks, sir. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you very much. And last is Vern Webb with 35 years with Public Works. Thirty-five years, that's an amazing amount of service. Again, thank you to all of you and thank you for coming tonight. And again, we really appreciate your service. Our employees are our most valuable resource. Thank you very much. I have the privilege of reading a proclamation. I'd like to welcome down to the floor with me representatives from the Daughters of American Revolution.
Hi.
How are you?
Fine, how are you?
Thanks for joining us this evening. We have a proclamation that I would like to read and present to the ladies. Whereas the history and culture of our great nation have been significantly influenced by American Indians and indigenous people, and whereas the contributions of American Indians have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today, and whereas their customs and traditions are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States, and whereas Native American Awareness Week began in 1976 and recognition was expanded by Congress and approved by President George Bush in August 1990, designating the month of November as National American Indian Heritage Month, and whereas, in honor of National American Indian Heritage Month, community celebrations as well as numerous cultural, artistic, educational, and historical activities have been planned. Now therefore, I KP Westmoreland, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Bethany, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim November as National American Indian Heritage Month in Bethany, Oklahoma, and urge all citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Can I get a quick picture?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Would you guys like to say anything? Thank you very much. I call to order the Bethany City Council meeting for Tuesday, November 5th, 2019. Will we all rise for the invocation and the flag salute? A prayer will be led by Council Member Goodwin, and our prayer... And our flag salute will be led by Vice Mayor Knapp. Want to lead us in prayer, Councilmember?
Well, God, we thank you for this night. We thank you for the public service that are recognized tonight, those that put their lives on the line day in and day out. We thank you for their service, for the sacrifice of their families, and to be able to honor that tonight, and not just tonight, but to show our gratitude each day. For everyone else gathered tonight, volunteers and staff, might you give us wisdom as we make decisions for the good of the city and for all of our people. Amen.
If you'll join me, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for joining us this evening. Yes, our greatest asset in this city are our employees. It's really nice to see them recognized and know that we have some that have lasted 30, 35 years. And quite honestly, I don't know how, but Hank Moore's plaid shirt has reminded me of the colorful and very talented employees that we have, one of them being Jaime Carrera, who has worked for us since 2004 in Public Works. He is an equipment operator, and I just wanted to recognize him. He has no idea that I'm doing this, but he is actually a master welder, and he can weld gates and ornate things, even though he is an equipment operator for our city. Very talented people in our city and on our staff. Just wanted to say that. Item one is consent docket A through D. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Second.
Please cast your votes.
All approved.
Item two is a public hearing item, consideration of possible approval of a special use request by William Davis, applicant and property owner, for the purpose of building a 1,200-square-foot accessory building at 6301 Northwest 30th Street. And we have a report.
Good evening. So Barry is controlling my screen this morning, today. Okay, here we go. Thank you, Barry. So our first public hearing item tonight is for 6301 Northwest 30th Street. It's for an accessory structure, 240 square feet or larger, per ordinance for any accessory structure that's over 240 square feet. It has to go through the process of going to planning and zoning, and then coming to city council for approval. So that is why we are here this evening. For everyone, for a reminder on kind of our standards for approval per ordinance for accessory structures over 240 square feet. The height of the accessory building measured at its highest point shall not exceed the height of the primary building measured at its highest point. Your accessory structure can't be used as a dwelling unit. The roof pitch of the accessory structure should be the same as the predominant roof pitch on the primary structure. An accessory building can't be located on a lot that's not occupied by a primary building. If the primary building on a lot is destroyed or removed and not rebuilt within a two-year period of time, the accessory structure has to be taken down, removed. And then lastly, the accessory building approved as a special permit use under this section should not exceed in size the greater of 50 percent of the gross floor area of the primary building, or 10 percent of the total recorded lot area of the lot on which the primary building is located. So for this particular case, the zoning of this property is residential. The surrounding zoning, all around it, north, south, west, and east, is residential as well, and the total lot area is .41 acres. The current build lines for this property is a 25-foot front, a 5-foot side, and a 10-foot rear. There is an existing structure of a single-family home on this lot. The proposed structure is 1,200 square feet. Proposed use of the accessory structure is to be a workshop or storage. The primary building is a residence. 1,200 square feet for the accessory structure. The primary residence is 1,564 square feet. The height of both is going to be 15 feet. Roof pitch, both 4/12s. The roof material for the accessory structure is going to be metal, whereas the residence is shingles. The exterior wall covering of the accessory building is going to be metal, and the primary building has vinyl siding. Some project information. The building is going to have a garage door facing west. There's not going to be a paved driveway for this particular project. No electricity or plumbing is going to be run to the building. The wall height is going to be 10 feet, and the color of the building will match the house. The structure will be a concrete floor. It will be made of steel. The residence at this location does not have a garage, so this is going to be the sole source for storage. That's the reason for the accessory structure. As far as drainage is concerned, that is something that came up during planning and zoning, and they did ask about drainage. The property owner said that his property is lower than his neighbor's property. The water runoff runs to his lot and stands in his lot, but not the lots around him. And then in this particular case, it does not exceed 10 percent of the total recorded lot area. This is an aerial view of the property, but some notes. This picture's a little bit old. It's from Google Earth, so it's not up to date. The lot has been cleaned since this picture was taken. There are no cars there. All the structures have been taken down. If this accessory structure is approved, it will be the only accessory structure on this lot. And like I said, it will be used because there's no garage. And then this is a photo of proposed building and what he is wanting it to look like. And then some other placement info. The rear of the structure is going to be 98 feet from the rear property line. We only require 20 feet from the rear property line. The side setbacks on the east side's 5 feet, and the west side is 10 feet. And that is all for this particular case.
This is a public hearing item. Do we have anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this item? Does council have any questions or comments?
I have a question. This has come up before a couple of times since I've been back on the council. And item number six of the qualifications say the accessory buildings approved as a special permit use under this section should not exceed the size greater 50 percent of the gross floor area of the primary building, which in this case would be 782, I think, or 10 percent of the total recorded, which would be 1,788. So my question is, is this an either/or, or is this one or the other?
I don't know if that would be an attorney question. Planning and zoning has taken it as an either/or in past cases, that it needs to meet one or the other. That's how planning and zoning has...
I need that clarification because I voted no in the past because both criteria were not met. And if I'm voting incorrectly, I would like to know so.
I agree with what planning has been doing, that it's an or question. It can either be, in this case, 700 feet or less than the 1,700.
Oh, excuse me. Thank you. I never talk, so I don't remember to do that. No, I believe that they're interpreting it correctly. It's either the percentage of the house, or it can be the percentage of the entire lot. And here, it's smaller than the entire lot.
So if one of those criteria is met, then it can't be approved, or it can be approved?
It can be approved if one of those criteria is met, if it's the council's pleasure and one of those criteria is met.
Okay. I just, I needed an opinion on it. Thank you.
Any other questions? Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes.
All approved.
Item three is also a public hearing item, consideration of possible approval of a special use request by Paul and Angela Lee, applicants, and Calidity LLC, property owner, for the purpose of building a 384-square-foot accessory building at 2,800 North College Avenue. And we have a report.
We do. I'm not going to go over the ordinance again, because that was a lot. So to just dive into it, property information for this one, it's currently zoned residential. It's surrounded by residential on all sides. The total lot area for this property is .44 acres. Current build lines, excuse me, 25-foot front, 25-foot side, and a 20-foot rear. A single-family home currently sits on the property, and the proposed structure is a 384-square-foot accessory structure. The use of the accessory building is going to be storage hobby area, square footage of the proposed structure, 385... 384 square feet. The primary residence is 1,610. The height of the accessory building is proposed at 18 feet, where the house is 19 feet. Roof pitch for both, 4/12. Shingles for both for roof material, and the exterior wall covering of the accessory building is going to be wood siding. I believe the house is stone and rock. Some project information. The building on this one as well will have a garage door facing west. There'll be no paved driveway, no electricity or plumbing run to the building. The wall height will be 12 feet. The color of the building will match the house. And in this case, it does not exceed greater than 50 percent of the gross floor area of the primary building. This is an aerial view. As you can see, this is a little different case. They already have the pad poured there because they already had an accessory structure there that they had taken down, and they have come wanting to put it back up. They did not realize that they would have to go through this process to put it back up because it's over 240 square feet, but they've been very patient and gracious in doing so. So they are basically just replacing what was already there with something newer. And this is the proposed structure for this location as well.
As a public hearing item, is there anyone from the public wanting to address this inch and item? Are there any questions from council? Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes.
All approved.
Thank you.
Item four...
May I speak, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I discovered late in the day that I had made some clerical errors on this resolution, and I would ask that it be held over for next meeting so I can correct those.
Do I have a motion to table until... What is that date? November 19th?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes.
All approved.
Item five is proposed executive session discussion and possible... or an update from attorney concerning pending legal action and claims against the responsible parties concerning contamination of public water supply of the City of Bethany caused by contaminants migrating from the Oakland City Airport property, City of Bethany versus Gulfstream and Rockwell, case number 16 CV 10050, USDC WD Oklahoma, and planning for a path-forward strategy for litigation. Do I have a motion to go into executive session?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes.
All approved.
We shall return. We are out of executive session. No action was taken. Item six is proposed action following executive session, consideration of possible approval, payment of claims for expenses to date with White's in Luxembourg, PC and Barber and Barts.
Mr. Mayor, I have a motion.
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to have the city attorney and the city manager review and confirm the terms of the contract with our attorneys, and based upon that review, authorize payment if necessary.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes.
All approved.
Item seven is update discussion and possible action concerning the water contamination, water well efforts.
I do have a little bit of an update on that. As you're aware, we were testing some more sites that... for possible well locations. We did receive some preliminary tests back on those well sites, and we have very good news. Those tests had tested good. So we actually need to, at this point, move forward. We're going to perform some more extensive tests that will measure the... any levels that... they're more accurate and extensive tests, so we'll need to do that next. But those tests did come back good, and that is good news. So we are moving forward on that.
Fantastic. Item eight, citizens' opportunity to address the council on general topics related to city business or services. A three-minute limit. No action may be taken on matters under this item. Do we have anybody wishing to address the council this evening? Item nine, city attorney's report.
I don't have it. I don't have anything. Thank you.
Item 10, the city manager's report.
Just a few things tonight. One thing I wanted to update you on. One of the most important things is our communication, whether that be outgoing from our staff to the public or from staff to the council. And I wanted to update you that we are working on a plan for that, and I'll be presenting more details in the coming weeks on that and how we can better communicate. The other thing, we had our first ADA committee last week. Troy Rhodes, our architect for City Hall, this was a concentration on the actual project at City Hall. We had some very good discussions for a couple of hours, and we plan to meet again very soon and try to... There's several different options that we'll probably be looking at and presenting to council for some decisions on that, and they involve different, you know, cost levels. And so we're going to look at getting more accurate and more cost on these particular plans, and so we'll be moving forward and presenting some of that information very soon. A couple of other things. We have our big trash pickup starting on December 2nd. I know there was some confusion about big trash this fourth quarter, and I can assure you that we're working next year to have those dates very clear for the... for everybody involved. So that's something we'll be getting out. There's a lot of upcoming events. We've got our special election on November 12th for Ward One councilperson. Would encourage you to get out and vote. We also have our library grand opening. That is an amazing building. I think everybody is going to be pleased. We are in the final stages, the final punch list, so to say, on completing that project. I think everyone will be pleased. The grand opening is Saturday, November 16th at 10:00 a.m., so I would encourage everybody to come out to that grand opening. Bethany Breakfast this Thursday at 7:30 a.m. will be at American Legion Post 12 on Northwest 50th. And I believe that's all I have for tonight.
Thank you. Item 11 is mayor and council members announcements, comments, and proposals. This evening, let's start down with Mrs. Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. As the city manager said, I want to encourage all of the Ward One voters to get out there and pick the one of the three that you want to represent you on this council. It's an important position, and I hope that you're looking at each of the three of them discreetly and real fine-toothed-like. One of the questions that has been raised to me is the increase in the utility rates that has been discussed. Are we going to be more open? Do we have any things scheduled to let the citizens know more about that?
So we've actually had some... a lot of internal meetings over that over the last couple of weeks, and we're formulating some various ideas. So we'll be communicating some of that information out as we move forward.
It's not on the back, Bernard, then?
Not at all.
Okay. And then I want to congratulate those that were recognized tonight. It just is a really neat thing to have our employees spend so many years here with us in this city, and to have that experience and the dedication that we have. So I'm grateful to those people. I have had the opportunity this week to make a run to the animal control. I didn't get any more to take home, and so my husband's still happy with me. But I'm amazed at how much work is being done, not only to take in the animals, but to get them out and adopt it. It's just... If you haven't been on the Facebook page, go watch it. It's just... It's really cool. It's heartwarming. So I want to thank the animal control for doing that. Code enforcement was another one that I want to thank for cleaning out the city. It seems like there's been a real effort of recent to get everything trimmed and mowed and streets cleaned, and I really appreciate that. And my citizens have contacted me and said the same thing. So a big shout-out to Public Works for that as well. And that's all I have this evening.
Thank you.
Wait, one more thing. One more thing. I'm sorry. Do not forget the library. And Thanksgiving will be coming up. We have another meeting before then. But I want to give a heads-up. During the holidays, this is a real special time that I want us to remember those that don't have a family, or they're single people, or retirees that they just don't have anybody. And my family has been blessed for many, many years when we invite someone into our home to celebrate one of the holidays with us. So I would encourage you and challenge each of you, if you don't... If you have a neighbor or a friend at charge or somebody that you're in some club with that you know's going to spend that day alone, invite them to your home, or take them to dinner, or do something with them. It will change both of your lives. Thank you.
I think Ms. Larson said everything I was going to say. I would also like to thank those individuals that received the longevity awards tonight. They are our most important resources. It's not to say that those individuals that went to work today and worked every single day don't deserve the same thanks from us. So all those that didn't receive a reward, remember those city employees. I'd like to thank everybody here for coming out. I would also like to say, as the holiday season comes upon us, you know, there's people out there less fortunate than we are. out there less fortunate than we are. Find a way to, to do something that helps your neighbor. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Herr?
Thank you, Mayor. I have nothing.
Mr. Knapp?
Thank you, Mayor. And again, Mrs. Larson covers most of the things I intended to. Library in particular I had down. And this will jump ahead a little bit past the next meeting. Friday, the 22nd, visit the downtown merchants. We'll have a tree lighting ceremony. They'll all be open late, so visit and come enjoy the time, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Palmer?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also want to congratulate the employees for their hard work for an extended period of time. I know Lonny Compton personally, and I want to congratulate him on 25 years in the fire department. That's quite an accomplishment, and I think all the employees should be proud of their service, and we certainly appreciate it. The Halloween Safe Street was a success. We had a lot of kids, tons of candy. We ran out, I think I was started at 6:00 and I ran out at 7:10. So it was a success, and I appreciate everybody who participated, not only the residents on college, but then all of the children. I hope they had a fun time and enjoyed the, the candy and costumes. I know I did. We, I would also like to announce that we're having a Ward Two town meeting, town hall meeting on December 7th, 2019, at 9:00 a.m. at the new library. Apparently, I was the first one to make a reservation for the room that would be available in the new library. So that's a new community room that we have access to, and I hope we can have a bunch of people come in for Ward Two. We'll talk about what's going on. And I'd also like to reiterate the November 22nd tree lighting. That's always a great event. It's a good family event, and it's a great way to bring in the holidays here in Bethany. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Goodman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to echo the appreciation for the staff and those who, who give so much day in and day out. Would like to just give, give kudos to the Vision 23 group, as well as the City of Bethany, for the Bethany Fall Classic 5K that they had this past weekend, and a lot went according to that, shutting down streets and getting with residents and things. And it was just a neat night. The drum line came out from Putnam City, and it was just a really neat atmosphere to bring the neighborhood together, and love to see more of those things. They, they're simple, but they bring the community together, and so I just give thanks to everyone who, who worked so hard to bring that together. Would also like to thank, a scouting troop got to go this past Sunday night over at Putnam City United Methodist Church, just over here, just down the way. And there is a group of, of young scouts that are both boys and girls that are from, a number of them are from Bethany, and they do a service project each month. They were at the cemetery service just, just a few weeks ago and planted flowers there, and they're looking for things in the community. So if you have a group or something you think might be worthy of them volunteering and learning in, you can get with them. Stephanie Bernetti is one of the contacts for that, and also Troy Humphries. And so I just thank them for their leadership, and they're raising up the next generation of leaders. That's all I have.
Thank you. Ms. Sandoval?
Thank you. I just want to remind you all, our next Ward One election is November 12th. I'm really excited for it, to finally get a co-counselor. You know, we have really great three candidates. I would really, really appreciate if everyone does their due diligence and their homework and see which candidate best suits their ideals and what they want for the vision of Bethany. That being said, I'm, I'm going to go ahead and say it in Spanish. Quiero agradecerles a todos y recordarles que vayan a votar este martes ya para el distrito uno, para mi co-consejal para poder agregarse en esta conseja que es mi representación que necesitamos. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to let everybody know that we have met and we are, have discussed, and we are in the process of trying to reschedule our Budget 2.0 meeting, town hall meeting that we had talked about a few weeks ago. We had to reschedule that due to a family crisis with somebody that, that we need to be involved in that meeting, and so we are hoping to do that this month, if I'm correct, at some point in time. So we'll be announcing that hopefully soon. Also, I will, I try to admit when I'm wrong, and I have voted on some things that I've admitted in the past that I think I made a mistake, and we've revisited some of those in the past. And it has recently come to my attention of something, as I think about it, I think I may have been a very strong champion for something that we got voted and approved that I may be second guessing myself, and maybe that's something we need to discuss. And that is the bathrooms or lack of bathrooms at our new playground. I will say that it was probably the children doing the all-familiar dance that we've all done at some point in time in our life, trying to make their way over here to City Hall, because there is no bathroom over there. But I know there's options that we've seen at other playgrounds and facilities that mirror and look a lot like the playground equipment, where porta-potties handicap accessible and not, that fit in and, and they look nice. And so I think that may be something, whether we go back and redo that or not, I think that's something maybe we need to discuss and look into. So I would just admit that I'd be willing to, to have that conversation, see where that goes. Also, you know, we know that, many of you know that a few years ago, we worked on, the cities and citizens worked on the comp plan, the comp 2030 comprehensive plan. Speaking with Mr. Gilbert Carlson, who chaired that, and there were several council members and staff that, that were on that steering committee, along with many citizens, hundreds, if not thousands, of man-hours went into that, and probably from what we can recall, about $110,000 spent to come up with that document. And that is why I, I'm looking forward to trying to schedule and hold several meetings throughout our community in the various wards and neighborhoods to hear from the citizens and those of us on the council, to try to come up with the 30-by-30, five- and 10-year vision plan, which is really, it is not the comprehensive plan. We already have that. The 30-by-30 is simply a roadmap to try to guarantee success for our city, so this doesn't just become another very expensive plan that we never really implement or see to fruition. And so I want to see progress made in that area, and I think if we can be laser-focused and very strategic and have very specific goals and a target, that we're going to do very well, and our staff is going to shine, helping our city get to that point. And so I look forward to working on that in the near future and hearing from the citizens about that. And with that, that is all that I have. Item 12 is new business. Do we have any new business? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until November 19th, 2019. I call to order the Bethany Public Works Authority. Item one is consent docket A and B. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes.
All approved.
Item two is new business. Do we have any new business? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until November 19th, 2019. I call to order the Bethany Hospital Trust. Item one's consent docket A and B. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes.
All approved.
Item two is new business. Do we have any new business? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until November 19th, 2019. I call to order the Bethany Development Authority. Item one's consent docket A and B. Do I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Please cast your votes.
All approved.
Item two is new business. Do we have any new business? With no new business, I declare us adjourned until November 19th, 2019. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.